I have remarks from Al Ammons, who is from the Love Thy Neighbor Foundation, who is bringing us this forum. Okay, Al.
Yeah, this news just came in because of inflation and the empty shelves and food shortages. And the five second rule has been extended to 10 seconds. The Love Thy Neighbor Foundation is proud to be a sponsor for the Greendale School Board Candidate Forum. Love Thy Neighbor Foundation would like to change the view of the way we think about the elderly. Research shows that 90% of seniors want to stay in their own homes. That can be a struggle for caregivers. Crisis driven, we're not aware of all of the resources that are available. That's where Love Thy Neighbor Foundation comes in. LoveThyNeighborFoundation.org is a one stop resource to connect elderly adults and especially, especially caregivers to resources such as groceries, food delivery, transportation, in-home care, home repair, home repair modifications, legal services, and social activities. Love Thy Neighbor Foundation has found that a lack of awareness of available services to be more of a barrier than the unavailability of the services. I want to repeat that. Love Thy Neighbor Foundation has found that a lack of awareness of available services to be more of a barrier than the unavailability of the services. Now, the heart and soul of Love Thy Neighbor and Electronic Wizard, Eileen Soto.
At every season of our lives, we either know a caregiver, we are a caregiver, or we're going to need a caregiver. We have over 450 resources just in this area listed on our pre-website. So you can find them at lovethynumberfoundation.org, or you can call 414-562-6666. And we can help you navigate the site and help you find the resources and the help that you need. That's lovethynumberfoundation.org.
Okay, you're muted, Kay. Welcome to the candidate forum for Greendale School Board. Thank you to our sponsor, the Love Thy Neighbor Foundation. My name is Kay Vance. I will be your forum moderator this evening. The League of Women Voters of Milwaukee County is a nonprofit, nonpartisan membership organization that promotes informed and active participation in government. As a nonpartisan group, the league never endorses a political party or a political candidate. It is important to be an educated voter, so we thank you for taking the time to learn about the candidates. And we thank the candidates for coming and letting you learn about them. We also welcome you to join the League of Women Voters, which despite its name includes several men as members. Questions for this forum event were submitted prior to the forum by the Greendale community. Thank you to everyone who provided questions. We had numerous submissions, unfortunately too many to present in the time allotted for the forum. Where possible, we have tried to combine questions so we can cover as many topics as possible. Six candidates are seeking election for Greendale School Board, vying for two positions. A primary election will be held on Tuesday, February 15th, to narrow the candidate pool down to four. On the primary ballot are Brian Bach, Tasha Hughes, Rob Kobleska, Thor Misko. Did I pronounce that your name right, Rob?
Yes.
Okay. Thor Misko, Tony Novinski, Lauren Shuckart. Any, is that correct for the pronunciations?
That's correct.
I'll assume it. Okay, the candidates have chosen to be addressed by first names, which are easier than some of the last names, so I'm glad of that. We're going to begin with 90-second opening statements from each candidate, followed by the questions with 90 seconds allowed for each answer. Then we will end with 60-second closing remarks. Lots were drawn to determine the order of speaking. Tasha is going to be giving the opening statement first. And then whoever goes first will rotate one of the questions. So Tasha will give the opening first, and then Rob will give the opening, and then we'll go down the list that way. And then next, the question, we start with the question, then Rob will have the first question, and we'll go down that way. So the order of first response to a question will rotate. You'll see a sign indicating when you have 30 seconds left to speak. Nancy's going to hold that up. When you have 15 seconds left to speak, and when you must be done. But we will let you finish your thought and finish your sentence. So please honor the guidelines as much as possible, so we can make the best use of the limited time we have to hear from all our candidates. Now we will start with the opening statement. So in a 90-second or less, please share your opening comments. We are beginning with Tasha.
Yes, hi, thank you for having me. I have lived in Greendale with my husband for the past 22 years. We have three children. My youngest is at elementary, an elementary school at Canterbury. I have a child at the middle school and one at the high school. We love our community. We like the walkways. We love going to the stores, like, I don't know, The Nest, we go to Ricardo's. We also enjoy the festivals, and I would say our favorite is Dickens. I would say my husband's favorite part of Greendale at the moment is going to the dump. I earned my bachelor's degree at UW Madison in actuarial science, where I worked as an actuary. After that, I returned to school at UW Milwaukee and obtained my master's of business. I served as an auditor for several years in a big five accounting firm, and then switched over to a financial consultant at Northwestern Mutual. Shortly after my stint at Northwestern Mutual, I chose to answer our district's call to action, where I was a substitute teacher for five years until the pandemic hit. I subbed in many and all of the schools in the district. I have been a volunteer on the Citizens Budget Committee, as well as the Greendale School District's Citizen Strategic Planning. It has helped me learn a lot about what it takes to work in an educational setting. I have been very active in the community. I have been a Girl Scout leader. I have worked with the marching band, as well as cleaning green and the robotics teams. I have been involved in the Greendale education system for the past 16 years. I'm a fierce advocate for my children, and now it is time that I advocate for all the children of Greendale. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rob, your opening statement.
I think I'd just like to start off by echoing what Tasha said about her husband. I think one of my favorite things might be going to the dump at Greendale here. First of all, I am honored to be a candidate for the Greendale School Board. I've lived in this community for probably the past nine and a half to 10 years with my wife. My wife, her parents, and her grandparents all grew up in Greendale. So I have a solid understanding of just how unique and special this community is. I have a stepdaughter who's a junior, and her attending Greendale schools when I didn't live here was probably the number one concern for my wife. And it was at that moment that I realized what a special school district we have. So a little bit about me. Again, I have one child in high school. I will have a kindergartner at K5 at Canterbury next year. I have a nephew who's in first grade, and another nephew who is a year younger than my youngest daughter. So I'm also VP of the Greendale Library Board. I am a twineite coach. I've spent time volunteering at Village Days. And again, I'm just very excited to be a candidate for Greendale School Board, and good luck to all the candidates today.
Okay, thank you. Thor, your opening statement.
Very good. I'm Thor Misko, and I'm running for reelection on the school board. And just wanted to take a quick second just to say thank you to Legal Women Voters, and also to Love Thy Neighbor Foundation for hosting this forum, to make sure that we can share what's going on and give the community members of Greendale information about what we stand and how we stand on different issues. So thank you. I've been extremely blessed within my life. I grew up in Greendale, hanging out with my mother, known probably pretty widely as Coach Mary across Greendale, on the fields of Ambrooster and the different schools at the time. So from that point in time, I realized how engaged as a community Greendale was. And when my wife and I were looking to find the place where we wanted to raise our family, there was no doubt in our mind that we wanted to be in Greendale. So we moved back here, right before our first born was born, so a little over 2011, and made this our home, and it's been a blessing ever since. I've also had the good fortune of having a great opportunity to be engaged in the community. I've served on probably every committee that the schools has to offer in some capacity throughout my time. And within my work area, my background's as an engineering, and I was a little bit frustrated with how I found out about engineering, so I got involved in helping people find their passion. And that's what brought me to an organization called Project With the Way, where I helped lead that organization across the country, which is now engaging over 4 million students in STEM curriculum. And my hope is to take what I've learned from that, and also work with colleges and universities across the country, and make sure that we can continue to have a beacon of excellence in our community through Greendale Schools and be a national exemplar.
Okay, thank you. Tony, your opening statement.
My name's Tony Novinski, and I've been a proud resident of the Village of Greendale for the past 30 years, but I was serving the community in a community service capacity for actually 32. It's, I guess, my biggest accomplishment as far as community service has been Village Days. And now we've partnered with the Lions Club, and we've grown it to be twice the size that it used to be. Went to school at UW Oshkosh. I grew up in the southwest corner of the state in a little town called Fenimore. So having a town center feel with the small-town feel was what I was looking for. I didn't want to live in a large urban environment. And I found that this has been a perfect place to raise two kids. 2015 graduate, my daughter, and my son was a 2018 graduate. So while I am an empty nester, what I bring is about 25 years of business experience to this and 32 years of community service to Greendale, and I'm eager to apply it in this setting. Thank you.
Lauren, you're next.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Schukert. I'd like to come in and to thank the Love Thy Neighbor Foundation for hosting this event. I've lived in Greendale for 20 years now with my wife, Robin. We have 11-year-old son, Quinn. We're very proudly, he's a fifth grader at College Park, will be going on to the middle school next year. As a Greendale resident, I've been active in the school community as part of the College Park PTO, serving as both president and treasurer. Greendale Education Foundation Board Member. I was a part of the participant in the 2021 Greendale School Strategic Planning Sessions. Also an attorney and small business owner. Question I often get is why, why you want to be on the school board with everything that's going on these days? Well, I really value education, having gone four years of college and three years of law school. I'm committed to our schools, our students, and the continued excellence of the schools. I have a vested interest having my son in fifth grade. I'm really inspired by the College Park community, the teachers, staff, parents, administration. It's really a close family. Everyone there is great. They inspired me to be involved in the school there and to continue to be involved in the future. And also I get a certain personal satisfaction of helping others. If elected, I'll proactively address issues before they become problems. I work with our community to promote a safe learning environment that empowers our children to excel. We are a community that values our schools and our students, and we are Greendale Strong and Stronger Together. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. And Brian, your opening.
Brian Bach. I'd like to thank the Love Thy Neighbor Foundation for supporting this, and also the League of Women Voters of Milwaukee County. I've been a happy resident for the last four years in Greendale here. Just, you know, it's one of those things that I see Greendale really wants our kids to receive a high and balanced quality education, which we prepare for them, make sure they're ready for what the world throws at them. We've seen a lot of bipartisan dogfighting and ignoring what our kids mattered, what should matter the most, our kids. So when I'm on school board, I promise to stay above the political nonsense and really focus to make the decisions the best we can for our kids and what our community wants. So that's why I asked for your vote this February 15th.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move to the questions submitted from the Greendale community. The sign will again let you know when you have 30 seconds, 15 seconds remaining, and when you must stop. We will begin the questions with Rob Kobleska. And question number one is, how does your own educational background, personal and professional background, and prior school involvement prepare and qualify you for a school board position? If you want to repeat it, just let me know.
No, no, that was a great, great question. Thank you for that, whoever submitted it. I attended UW Oshkosh and obtained my bachelor's in criminal justice. During my first job, working quite a bit of overtime, I decided to go back and get my masters. And unfortunately, my wife or girlfriend at the time was diagnosed with breast cancer. So I made the decision to get my masters online through the University of Phoenix for the Administration of Justice and Security. And I also serve as the Vice President of Noble Backbones. So I have a lot of educational experience. I've also graduated from the Police Academy. So being able to multitask, being able to learn in different environments, being able to handle certain stress while going through my education and also at work, I feel has given me the opportunity to truly understand what all goes into education, and also how to handle certain stress, stressors that are thrown your way while learning. I think in high school, there's a lot of kids that are stressed with getting ready for college. And I think that I bring a unique perspective, and I can also help them as they learn and grow and deal with these stressors and these situations that pop up in their life.
Thank you. Thor, you have the first question next. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, thanks. Got it. So from a standpoint of my personal background, just to kind of build off of my opening statement, I went to school to become an engineer, which was an accident, because I won a drafting competition in high school. And I found out that engineering companies hire draftspeople. And that's how I found out about engineering, and I didn't want that to be the case for others. And so I became an advocate for helping increase understanding and pursuit of different career opportunities for the career and technical education programs. So I serve as a treasurer for the Aaron's Foundation, which supports career and technical education across the state of Wisconsin. I started working for an organization called Project Lead the Way, when I fell in love with what they were doing and how they were engaging students, and ended up taking over as executive leadership in that organization as we scaled across the country, which offered me an opportunity to see schools all over the nation, and what made them successful, what made them not successful, and the things that they were doing. So I have worked and trained over a couple thousand teachers every single summer that I was part of that organization. So I got to learn and understand professional development and education through a K-12 lens. Then I got to serve on the Kern Family Foundation, leading our engineering education program to help change the way we teach engineering across colleges and universities. So I got to work with 220 of the 420 engineering colleges. We transformed the way we taught engineering, so I got to see it from the higher ed side. But ultimately, as a sitting board member, my record is public record and how I've been doing what I've been doing across Greendale. I look to continue to do that as we move forward.
Thank you. Tony, you're up. I'll repeat the question now. How does your own educational background, personal and professional background, and prior school involvement prepare and qualify you to be a school board member? Tony, you're next.
On the personal and professional side, I'm a UW Oshkosh graduate as well. I don't have a double major, but I have a two-track major in music industry business and recording technology, which I spent a whopping three years in the music business and realized it wasn't for me. So I moved into basically manufacturing for the last 27 years. So I guess I've got a strong problem-solving, private sector background. As far as being involved in the schools, I was part of one of the, there was three teams that set the policy for some of the initiatives, and some parents volunteered to be part of that. I was on the choice of profession track, I don't remember the technical name of it, it was back in 2018, where we tried to inject balance into not being the sole focus of having a four-year degree, trying to also allow kids to explore the trades, to explore apprenticeships, to have a little bit more well-rounded, what do you want to say, access, or just to know what's out there. So that's what I bring to the table.
Okay. Lauren, you're next with that first question.
Thank you. The Wisconsin School Board Association, in case that good school board members should be a strong advocate for our students. As a practicing attorney for more than 20 years, I went to four years of college, which is four-plus years of college and three years of law school. I've been practicing law for the past 20-plus years. I have my own business where I manage as much as four attorneys and staff over time. Daily difficult business decisions in terms of hiring and letting people go. A lot of my practice focuses on family law. A lot of the issues that I deal with in family law cases are high conflict cases, people that don't get along, they can't agree on things. I think that is a good basis for me to be able to make decisions in the interim on the school board. A lot of those decisions or issues that come up have to do with issues involving domestic violence, certainly issues regarding vaccinations has been a hot topic in family law when you have children living with different parents and having to make difficult custody decisions and not having agreements. And you really need to be able to sit back and analyze all the facts, listen to all the sides, and make strong decisions. I have experience serving as a guardian light in family court cases. I think that experience would serve me well on the school board. It would certainly, a strength I would have would be able to listen to all the different opinions, analyze them, ask critical questions, look at the evidence, and come up with sound decisions that are in the best interest of our community, our school community. Thank you.
Okay, Brian, question number one. Would you like me to repeat that?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
My backgrounds for education is pretty diverse. I have attended Velparis University for my undergrad. I did a double major in biology and chemistry, and then went on to work in drug research in a lab in Illinois, where I also started working on a master's at Illinois Institute of Technology in Chicago. Then I kind of didn't about-face meeting some pharmacists, went back to school, which involved going to technical colleges, a Marin Valley Community College down in Illinois, also Madison Area Technical College in Madison, where then I attended UW Madison Pharmacy School for my doctorate. Part of, you know, this deep value of education, it's not just one individual topic that you can have. Education is not just schooling inside the classroom. It can be learning a trade. It can be working with your hands and stone cutters. One of my favorite analogies is my cousin went to college. He really did not enjoy it. He ended up falling into working with stone and absolutely loves it. He's fantastic with it, brilliant guy. And I think that's something we need to share. Make sure we're focusing on what the kids succeed on, and give them every opportunity to succeed on that. And I'm willing to listen and help and make sure those kids have those opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Tasha, question number one, would you like me to repeat it?
Sure.
Okay, it is how does your own educational background, personal and professional background, and prior school involvement prepare and qualify you for a school board position?
All right, thank you. Similar, some of it's I mentioned in the introduction. My background is in actuarial science, and I obtained my degree from UW Madison. I worked for a few years in a consulting firm as a pension actuary, and then I went back to school and obtained my master's in accounting from UW Milwaukee. I spent several years as an auditor, and I feel that at that time, every single week I was at a different company. I was learning new things. I would show up at one company, actually, one year I was at Waste Management down south, and I knew nothing about auditing a garbage dump. And my office was right in the dump site itself. You meet new people, you have to learn about new things on the fly, and you have to work with all kinds of people from all walks of life. So I feel like my background is one of, like, the cornerstones of making a good board member, and that is we must have an open mind and willingness to learn, and that is what I am really good at doing. In addition, I have also been on the Citizens Budget Committee for several years. I worked with Erin Green. I worked on Act 10, the elimination of the bargaining agreement, spending referendums. I not only have the capability of working well with everyone, I also have the background of the education, what is needed in an educational system accounting-wise as well. Thank you.
Okay, Thor, you are getting the first crack at question number two, which is a vital responsibility of the school board is to balance education with the resident property taxes. How do you plan to balance these very important duties?
That's a great question, and one that I can definitely lean into. So when you look at my priorities and what I've made my priorities over the years of my first three years in the school board, has been access and opportunities for all students. It's been making sure that we can better support our teachers. And then lastly, it's around cost-conscious decision-making for our residents. And across the board, if you look at our fiscal responsibility, we've actually decreased taxes every single year that I've been on the board. So in 2019, our mail rate was $11.17. 2020, we went to $10.51. In 2021, we went to $10.24. So you multiply that by every $1,000 that your home is worth, and that is actually the percent that goes to support the schools. That has been something that's been really important to kind of always be looking at how do we maintain fiscal responsibility, but at the same time, do what we need to do in the school board, which is put children first, and make sure that we're providing them with all the opportunities that they need to be successful. Worked hand-in-hand with our business manager, Jonathan Mitchell, as we created the priorities that we look at when setting our budget, helped make sure that we were pulling in community members to bring in insight on a regular basis as we're leaning into the budget-setting process, that we're not just hearing from only those inside of the schools, but reaching out and bringing in different perspectives. And I've been very proud of the record that we have across Greendale School since I've been on the board from the standpoint of fiscal responsibility, and look forward to continuing that in the future.
Okay, thank you. Tony, question number two.
Since this is my first political campaign, and also I've been told by existing and past board members, as well as the superintendent, that the new board members will have a learning curve. I think I might be speaking for all of the newbies on the call. What I can bring is fiscal responsibility, because I am fiscally responsible myself in my own life, and I also carry myself that way in the professional world as well. But the school board develops and sets policy and initiatives that the superintendent of schools then implements. And I understand that the board member is also a team member together with the superintendent. And so what we have to balance is the academic plan with laser focus on academic achievement, with measurable results, all while maintaining fiscal responsibility. But I've not been privy, as a citizen, to how this has been implemented, and obviously, any of the policy discussions behind it. So I'm very eager to learn about how we can be a little bit easier on the tax, the tax-paying citizens of the Village of Greendale.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Lauren, question number two.
Thank you. I echo Tony's sentiments to a certain extent. They're not having been on the board before. But certainly as part of the Strategic Planning Commission, one of the things we focused on was managing resources responsibly. And as set forth in the mission statement of the schools, one of the priorities is support innovation to remain competitive. And as set forth in the mission statement of the schools, it, one of the priorities is support innovation to remain competitive. And a district, district of choice for families. I am certainly in favor of being fiscally responsible, um, running a business. I make financial decisions and make sure that we don't overspend. On a daily basis. One thing that's important to keep in mind though is we don't want to not have resources available for families that don't. Don't have the funds to pay for lunches or don't have funds to pay for books or things that they need for school. I'm, I'm a big supporter of more grassroots involvement of our, by our community, which includes the Greendale Education Foundation. Um, as a board member and some of you may or may not be aware of what they do, but they raise funds, they give grants. To the schools and teachers that request them provide books for class or for libraries, um, special equipment for. For kids participate in middle school activities that, um, couldn't otherwise do that. And the PTO groups that really support, um, schools too are College Park PTO this last year donated four thousand dollars. To the district to purchase, um, accessible playground equipment. I know the Canterbury PTO supported actually coming out there on a weekend and setting up playground equipment when they didn't think there was going to be funding available. So it's really the grassroots involvement of those groups to make sure that no one falls through the cracks. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian, question number two.
I would like to echo the sentiment. I have not sat in on any of the board meetings specifically for our school board. I have sat in on two other nonprofits and national organizations that we've set budgets. Um, I think obviously, you know, the responsibility is to make sure that we're keeping a balanced budget going forward. But we also have to make sure that we're not doing just for one year, but we are looking at successes and failures from the years back. From previous budgets, but also making sure that we're looking for not just this year, but next year and the following year. You know, we have inflation and costs of things rising and while I love low taxes, I also think we don't want to. Cut ourselves so that we're. You know, not allowing our kids to have every opportunity that they can also. So I think just making sure that the budget is within. A reasonable realm and obviously making sure, you know, we keep our costs down as low as we can for our residents. But also making sure that we're maximizing what we can give our students and that they're going to get the best education they can from us. And I think that's something we all agree on, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tasha.
So since my background is so heavily weighted towards the financial, um, just with my CPA background and all my years of auditing. As well as being on the, uh, citizens budget team with Aaron Green. I do understand how the finances work in the school district and I will echo what Thor says, the district has always been very. Careful and cautious when it comes to the mill rate and for the past three, four years, it has been somewhat stable or somewhat decreasing. So if you take the mill rate and multiply it by every thousand dollars that your house is assessed at, that is, that is what you pay in school taxes and that has been. De- decreasing, so I do feel that this district is fiscally responsible. I think, um, and I know from. My own, um, personal like background with my accounting, um, work at Northwest from Mutual, I have been on a lot of cost savings projects. I am good at balancing budgets and I can work with the district to find ways to. Uh, maybe obtain some grants or some other cost savings initiatives. I do know right now that there is some money out there from the state of Wisconsin. Um, offering up to the school districts to incorporate Asian Pacific Islander culture education in the classrooms. And I do feel that, um, as a board member, it is our job to look for these educational avenues that, um, also give us some financial aid. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Rob, last on question number two.
Well, it's always tough to go last. Uh, um. I kind of echo, um, a lot of the things that have already been said, um, kind of like with what Tony said. I don't necessarily ha- I'm not privy to some of the information that comes in with, um. The, the tac- tax records and the, uh, financials in the school district, but, um, kind of like what Thor said. Having Jonathan Mitchell, um, having access to him is something that I would definitely tap into. But as my vice, as being vice president of, uh, my company, um, I wear many hats, yeah, um. Financial responsibility is, um, a hat that I wear. I have to reduce costs at work, I have to meet budgets, um, there's a lot of demands, especially with cutting costs in regards to employees. And, um, some of those issues, I, I make difficult decisions every day at work, um, regarding the financials. So I feel that, um, this should be no different for me. Um, I, I don't think it will, it certainly won't be easy. But it's something that I'll be able to do, um, successfully. And it's my understanding that the state of Wisconsin has a, um, one point seven million dollar proposal, I think, for some funds to come back to schools. And there's also, I believe, a two point nine billion dollar surplus. I might not be, uh, correct on those exact numbers, but finding the balance of, um. You know, keeping taxes low is something that I, um, I absolutely want to do and that is one of my goals. Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to start with question number three. Teachers, students and parents are all important stakeholders in our schools. What are your views on the relative roles of these stakeholders in driving curriculum and other school decisions? And I'll just repeat the stakeholders they're talking about are teachers, students and parents. And the relative roles of these stakeholders in the curriculum. And other school decisions. So the first one, uh, for that one is Tony.
That's a good question. Um, I think that utilizing the existing. Excellent PTO groups, the booster clubs and our advisory boards allows putting the needs of the students, the parents. And the residents firmly in the forethought of all decisions and feedback. I also believe that face-to-face meetings with parent. It, with parents, I should say, is very important because as messages, especially tone. Uh, like Brian pointed out, can be lost or misres- uh, misinterpreted in text or email or on the internet. If some kids are falling behind, we can focus on key areas to bring them back. In order to achieve this re- revising or re- revisiting the strategic plan, uh, may be necessary.
Okay, Lauren, question three.
Thank you. First of all, I think teachers, students and parents all should have a say with regards to what the curriculum of the school should be. Ultimately, that, that decision is going to rely on the school board and the administration. Um, I think that's, that, this, that is certainly something that involves. The need to get feedback from experts, look at what other schools are doing, um, assess pros and cons of each thing. It's not a easy answer to decide what the curriculum is going to be, but I think you need to have, and I think our. Administration does a good job now of getting involvement and input from parents and students and teachers. They just, they need to continue to do that. I have no doubt that they're going to continue that in the future. But listen to the different groups and again, weigh the pros and cons. And make a well-balanced decision that's based on the facts and based on what's best for the school community. Um, there's certainly issues of critical race theory being taught versus culturally relevant teaching and different theories on those things. But, you know, you could probably ask each board member what their thought on those things are, but. Reality is, as far as I know, I'm not an expert on those topics and I don't know if any of the board members are. That's something that requires the input of experts and facts to be able to make well-informed decisions that are in the best interest of the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Brian, you're next for question number three. Would you like me to repeat it? We can't hear you, Brian. No.
Can you hear me now?
Not, not in a legible way. Do you want to futz and see what you can do and I'll come back to you?
Yes, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
I think that sounds okay now, doesn't it? Oh, maybe, maybe not.
No, I don't think so. Um, okay, Brian, I will come back to remind me if I forget you. Tasha.
Hi, yes. Okay, um, well, I, um, for, as far as curriculum goes, I, we do have a curriculum. Full-time or part-time, she splits her time between equity and curriculum. They are the experts. There's a lot of things that play between, um, like state regulations as far as what needs to be taught in the classroom or what needs to be covered. And like our curriculum, um, Maggie Olson, like she is that expert. I do think though she may be a little overworked and it would be nice. To see if we could, um, have maybe a full-time curriculum director. I know that the districts around us such as Whitefish Bay, they have a full-time curriculum director, a full-time equity person and a full-time pupil services. Um, employee. Um, so we are a little, um, I, I feel like her plate is very full. Um, as far as working together, I think we need some better communication. I know that there was some miscommunication with regards to the honors classes, um, now being embedded in their core classes. The high school has a parent advisory group that they have started, um, to work with the, the administration, the teachers and the parents. To talk about things that are coming up, curriculum related or otherwise. I feel that that parent advisory group should be expanded into the middle school and to have one at each of the elementary schools. So that parents do have more of a say and do understand the reasons for the changes that are happening via the curriculum or, or anything else. Um, I know that social emotional learning has been a hot topic and I do think a parent advisory group should be developed around that. Working with the parents, the teachers, as well as the curriculum director. Thank you.
Thank you, Tasha. Ryan, do you want to try again? How is your audible?
Out of this sound right now.
I, I think it's okay.
Okay, all right, so I'll just repeat the question. Teachers, students and parents are all important stakeholders in our schools. What are your views on the relative roles of these stakeholders in driving curriculum and other school decisions? I have an echo somewhere.
I think each person has a valuable. Is that clear back?
I'm not hearing you say a whole sentence and let's see.
I can hear me now.
No. The. However, this doesn't just happen to you. I've watched enough Zoom stuff on TV, it happens even on the. Big te- television stations, so, um. I'm having faulty hearing you, so I'm not sure.
Maybe, would you like to try to disconnect and, and reconnect and we'll, we'll move on and, and come back to you?
I'll come back to you last for this one. Let's see, uh, okay, Rob.
My good, I'm good to go now?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, um. So, uh, first of all, we're talking about, uh, schools here, right? So, um, students should always come number one, uh, parents should always come number two. And then I think we also need to consider the staff and the working conditions after that. And it's important to, to note that parents, they do have the right to bring their concerns to the school board. Parents, uh, they partner with teachers in educating their children. Parents should always have a right to know what is being said in the classroom. And I think Tasha hit the nail on the head, um, that there does need to be some better communication. I think there, there was some confusion in regards to the AP classes, parents that I've talked to. They were upset about it, they didn't have all the answers, um, and it was kind of like the telephone game. Where one per- one parent would call another parent and then I think there was just a lot of misinformation out there. So, um, I think that's something that we need to work on because, um, if parents don't know, um. About the education of their children, how do they really, um, point in on that at home? Because a lot of logic, a lot of education happens in the home. And, um, again, only approved curriculum should be being taught to these, to these students.
Okay, Thor, uh, your turn for question number three.
Thanks. Um, in, in general, I've just want to say that, um, parents, absolutely, their involvement is absolutely critical when it comes to student success. And if you look at the research, it will show that time and time again, the higher the parent involvement. Uh, is a major factor in success, um, and can even close achievement gaps across, across districts and across schools. And so we want to continue to do that. One of the things that I'm very proud of from Greendale and maybe I'll just share back on one story. That was this moment of realization that my wife and I made the right decision, uh, when raising our three, uh, children here in Greendale. Uh, showed up and I was asked to serve on the strategic planning committee in twenty eleven, uh, for the schools. And we came in and we were pulling this together and we had it hosted in the, in the, in the library. And, uh, had it all set up and then people started showing up as we did our community outreach. And we realized that we did not have enough seats in the library at the high school to support the community that wanted to provide feedback. So we had to move to the cafeteria in order to accommodate, uh, which was a little bit of an audible. Trying to run over there, get everything set up, get microphones, all the, the, the whole nine yards and it was a day and a half activity. So a day and a half, we had literally, uh, over two hundred and some members of the community that showed up to participate and provide feedback. We, as Greendale residents, we show up, we speak up and we advocate for our children. We need to continue to do that. We also need to realize that there is a responsibility matrix, if you will, for how we can really kind of ensure accountability. And do what's right for making the best decisions across the board.
Okay.
And I'm out of the time, so sorry.
Well, Brian, we get to hear from you now. Number, question three, hopefully.
I'm going to the question.
Question is. Teachers, students and parents are all important stakeholders in our schools. What are your views on the relative roles of these stakeholders in driving curriculum and other school decisions?
I think each group of people. Whether it be parents. Teachers or administration all have valuable input. Our parents see kids on a daily basis, the teachers spend their. You know, it's their career to make sure that these kids are well-rounded. And I think we also need to make sure we're reviewing with experts that we are hitting the expectations of. What the standards are that are set for our children. Um, everybody has a valuable input. And I think that the answer in the long run is making sure that we're all going together. And making sure we have the best decision for our kids going forward. And making sure that no person is not getting every opportunity that they need. And that every child has the best education that we can give them as Greendale has done for many years.
Okay. The next question is question number four and the person who gets that first is Lauren. Shukar, I'm going back to the same order that I had started before. So Lauren, you get question number four. Describe your views on how we teach about race and racism in our schools.
Certainly again with regards to curriculum, um, I'm not an expert on curriculum and not an expert on those topics. I would certainly rely on our. Curriculum director right now, Maggie Olson. Um, there's issues out there with regards to whether schools should teach critical race theory versus cul- culturally relevant teaching. I'm familiar with the background though, but again, I'm not an expert as to what. What the exact pros and cons and what should be taught. I think it's important to get inputs, we just said in the last question, from the students, teachers, parents, um, as well as the administration. and whatever other experts would have input on those subjects and deciding that. I am a believer that one of the, again, getting back, I guess, to more the grassroots involvement with regards to these things that with regards to cultural, cultural issues are PTO groups Highland View having the world. Their world around the world, thing in the fall where they have different cultures, tables and presentations. You get, students get to learn more about other students. I think having students know more about the culture and background of their co-students helps in the future so that there'll be less problems. I think they enjoy that. College Park recently had the fall dance where they had presentations from with regards to a event from India as well as Mexico. But introducing kids culturally through, through their other groups in the school, I think is important. Thank you.
Ryan, we're going to hear from you again, question four. You're back in your old order.
I think that the schools definitely need to make sure that we celebrate the diversity that we have in our classrooms. I think that making sure everybody sees the world from a different place. I have had the experience to participate in a community event while I was in Racine with the YMCA. What they did is they brought everybody in, in the different cultures that were in the surrounding area around one of the centers. And they brought in food, eating, you know, making a signature dish that was kind of something that used to celebrate in their culture. And then people went around discussing and learning about those cultures while eating and tasting the food. And the one thing I know about Wisconsin and just in my life, I enjoy, food is a great way to learn. And it's a great way to break down barriers. It's a great way just, you know, to be nearly and to get together and chat. If we have our celebrations in this village and I think that we look at teaching race and racism, I think we need to teach understanding for the kids. I'm sure they know where everybody's coming. And give the best outcomes for our kids.
Okay, thank you. Now question number four goes to Tasha.
I, as a board member, I want our kids to be able to recognize negative patterns, not only just to race, but to income level and any other type of circumstances, even such as gender. From little on up, we need to raise kids that have character, that are inclusive of others and that are empathetic. I think I personally would like to see a bi-monthly lesson taught at the elementary level. Talking about disadvantaged cultures around the world, as many of these types of cultures are now right here in our community. As I mentioned before, Wisconsin is now offering districts money to teach and educate kids on Asian Pacific Islander cultures as well. And I think Greendale should look into utilizing those funds to teach our students. I do think Greendale does a lot of things already that are wonderful. They had the All-World Festival at Highland View and they do that annually. And one year I was substitute teaching. I just happened to be at College Park that day. And I would say it was the most fun day I've ever had working with the kids. They converted the entire gymnasium into tables and they had different art projects from cultures around the world. And it was our job to go and have each student make three different types of crafts. And they, they would learn a little bit about each of the different cultures and many of those cultures are, were in their school as friends in their school. So I think Greendale has done a lot of great things, but I think we, we can even do more.
Okay, thank you. Rob, question four.
So I firmly believe that children don't see color. The reason why I think this is because I'm a parent and I know for a fact that my children don't. And I live on a cul-de-sac that has 14 to 16 kids, probably no older than third grade. And we live on a diverse block and they truly, truly enjoy playing with each other. They don't ask questions and if they do about, oh, so-and-so looks different from me, we answer, we answer those questions. And hate is actually, again, I believe taught at home. If you log on to any of the Greendale social media websites, that's a very good example of hate that kids are picking up and bringing to school, shaming kids for not wearing masks. To me, it's unacceptable. I think Greendale School District has met all the goals set by the Welcome Diversity Team. And I think it's important that we start putting a focus back on academics in our schools. While teaching about different races is important. The only way that we are really going to prop these kids up and set them for, set them up for success down the road is by giving them a good education and that should be our number one priority. And I believe I'm out of time, so thank you.
Okay, Thor, you're next with a question number four.
Thanks. First, I just want to say I, I had the opportunity to work on developing our equity policy for the district. I was on the policy committee, got to work with community members and our staff to craft a policy that was very, very clear that we reject all forms of racism, period. And when you look at this policy, it also highlights the importance of students being our first, our first priority. And in order to do that, the board must maintain our attention on students, just as our staff must. And we must fulfill that obligation by examining all the actions that we take as relates to students, including, including assuring a safe and supportive learning environment. So across the board, I think we've done a good job of moving, moving forward and ensuring that all students, because that's my goal, is that each and every student belongs and is empowered to learn and grow and is able to reach their full potential through the Greendale School System. That is what we need to make sure we're focused on across the board and everything that we do. And we can continue to break down barriers by offering and leaning into additional programs like we have. One program that I'm really curious about implementing and exploring is something called Designing Your Life, which then helps students kind of navigate and find different passions and engage with students and others as mentors across the, not only the district, but in the community.
Thank you. Tony, you're next.
Greendale School District needs a better understanding of the concerns of all citizens of the village, not just the vocal ones, including public groups. I've grown a little bit weary of talking about this subject because it usually escalates into shouting. We must come together as humans to incorporate the different elements that allow children and families to focus on student achievement, family involvement and celebrate our differences. But we have to do it through the lens of creating productive and responsible citizens. We of course achieve this via a strong and inclusive and engaging program. But I firmly believe in my heart that addressing social issues should start at home. Because there's a disproportionate attention paid to social justice issues at the moment. Yes, racism is terrible. No, I'm not a racist and I don't hang around any. And after 31 years of community service to Greendale, running Village Days and volunteering literally thousands of hours to many annual events, I'm really curious as to where all the systemic stuff is happening. Because of that over-focus on social justice, and I hope we get to address academics in a, in a question soon. We've seen a decline in academic achievement while we have a hyper-focus on social issues. All I'm trying to do is find where they intersect and be at that point. Thank you.
Okay, we're next. I think I'm, I'm going to switch to, the next question is similar to what we've just talked about and we may come back to it. But I'm going to switch to question, a different question, a different question for question number five, as question number five. And Brian, you go first on question number five. By some measures, Greendale proficiency scores in math and language reading have fallen over the past decade. Do you have concerns with overall student proficiency? And if so, what changes would you push to address this? Brian, you go first.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. One of the overall concerns that I've seen with proficiency, because some of our test scores have dropped. And I've had discussions with some of the teachers, our curriculum director and with Dr. Mizic. I think they did recognize, we've seen math drop a little bit. This year they changed the curriculum to address that. So then they worked with the administration, the board worked together, they adjusted the curriculum and I'd be interested to see how it turns. See if we've improved our scoring. This is a custom process. I think we can make changes for the better. Sometimes they don't work. Sometimes we need to review and assess and go forward and make another decision. Student proficiency should always be concerned. We should always be making sure that we're giving them the best curriculum, the best options, the best opportunities. So I think the one thing that I would want to address is also looking at some of the reading scores. They've started to dip a little bit. So I know that reading is going to be something the board will assess in the coming year. And I think that's a very proactive response already. And I think once that's assessed, we continue to look at each aspect of the kids and making sure that they are, they have every opportunity. And then there, we just keep reviewing. I think it's going to be a constant process and it should never stop.
Okay, Tasha, you're next with the question number five.
Yes, I've looked at some reports that Kim has given me regarding proficiency scores and they do have gone down in the past few years. The pandemic has magnified the problem. I do believe it would help if the district could find some benchmarks that mirror Greendale's socioeconomic and size makeup in order to see really how far we off, are off from other districts that are similar to our makeup. I do know that they are identifying gaps and where in the math area, they have identified the gap of where they think the proficiency, proficiency scores are declining. And it's in the middle school math curriculum and they are working to remedy that situation. I do know that they have now hired like an expert over there, one of the teachers. And she's, her full-time job now is to improve and provide instructional practices. So she's there helping the teachers, I guess, teach math concepts in a better way or maybe more in an accessible way to more students. I would also work on the substitute teacher shortage. A lot of times the interventionists have been pulled and utilized in the classroom as full-time substitutes. So the children that are behind in math and reading are not getting the intervention work they need. And that again, is driving the scores further down. We need to put the, the teachers back in the classroom. We need substitutes so that we don't have to pull all of our interventionists to, to help in that capacity. I think the district's on the right track and we just have to keep forging ahead. Thank you.
Okay, Rob, you're next for question five.
So, you know, Brian is absolutely right with these, these testing scores dropping. With academics, you have math that is dropped, ELA, which is English, English Language Arts Skills. That includes spelling. I don't think it's the teacher's fault. They're stuck with these programs. And it kind of like what Tasha said too, we've, we've had a lot of influx in Greendale and all over the world, really with this pandemic. Kids being shuffled in and out of schools, virtual learning, back to, back to in-person learning. Oh, now we're back to virtual learning. That has a lot of, that does a lot to a kid. There's certain, there's certain subjects that's hard to take tests for via virtual learning. It's hard to get into group work and really dive into work with, with your classmates. But I think we also need to look at Greendale as a whole. What have we gone through recently? Well, we've had three superintendents. Some have left, not by choice. I'm not going to get into that. But we've also had three interim superintendents. So there's just been a lot of influx, a lot coming at Greendale School District. And I think supporting Kim, the current superintendent is extremely important, I think very highly of her. Because at the end of the day, she's the one that is in charge of the quality of the curriculum. And if Kim fails, Greendale School District fails and I'm not going to let that happen. And again, Kim needs support.
Okay, Thor?
Thanks. So now, thank you. To build off, I mean, what you said, Rob, there. We have one of the recognizable leaders in curriculum instruction serving across the state of Wisconsin, serving as our superintendent and Kim Mazik. And she has set us on a trajectory and been a phenomenal leader. We have a great director of curriculum, of equity and instruction in Maggie Olson, who's driving forward. We also have the number, number one ranked teachers for the last three years running in the state of Wisconsin and the 22nd best according to NISH and across the entire US. We have rock star professionals that are leading and driving our district forward. And we need to continue to challenge them, set high expectations and set high bars as we move things forward across our district. One of the things that I was so proud of is the new design of our strategic plan as we're moving forward for the, as we look through 2021 and 2026 strategic plan to help guide us into that future. That ties in and really, you know, it's a laser focus on academic achievement and culting excellence in every student. I do want to swing back to some of the indicators that we're seeing across the DPI scores. So there's been some great resources that we've sent out, so the school connections to all community members. Every in our, in the mailboxes, so they can see how things are, what things look like and how they're happening. When you look at the tests, we're actually tracking with what's happening across the state of Wisconsin. We did see a dip this last year and that's not acceptable. We need to move forward. But that also goes to argue, are we pushing, is there some issues with the tests as well? And is how we make sure that we're always focused regardless of what DPI is testing to make sure our students have what they need to be successful.
Okay, Tony, you're next with question five.
My business experiences taught me that to look for the root cause and things that are failing. And I have to walk before I run, like we've stated before, because I'm not a school board member yet. But in this short time of researching things for my first ever campaign, I found that Greendale School District is faltering in math and English language arts. I'll also say that my research and experience in putting two kids through GSD, that Greendale has excellent teachers. Our falling reading scores are not the fault of the teachers. They're doing the best they can with the programs that have been proven ineffective. And I want to give concrete examples on this. I got this from the DPI website. One specific area is the balance in, is the balanced literacy methodology consisting mostly of the Lucy Calkins and the Fountas, Fountas and Pennell, I hope I'm saying that right, programs. My rudimentary research from the DPI website points to very clear data that it's not effective as there's been steep declines. Examples, the GSD ELA scores district-wide in 2014, 15 were 73% proficient or advanced. By the 21 school year, we dropped to 51%. Looking at it the other way, 2014, 15, only 28% of the kids were basic or below. Now it shot up to 49%. And the last part, it's an equity point. For black students in 2014, 15, their ELA scores district-wide were 49% proficient to advance. Now they've dropped to 23. To me, this is a solid, concrete equity talking point. Obviously, these programs do not work, but especially for black students. But once again, equity is for everyone. So if we're going to make it more equitable, I think that program needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Lauren, question number five.
Thank you. First of all, I'm a big supporter of our current administration. I do believe that Kim Mazik is an outstanding superintendent of our schools. We have an excellent, excellent equity and curriculum director in Maggie Olson. As with anything, it takes time to adjust things, time As with anything, it takes time to adjust things, time to get feedback with regards to test result, result scores. See what works and what doesn't work. If you try different programs, you need to, they may work, they might not work. But again, you need to wait and give it a chance. You know, with regards to test result scores, Greendale still is in the top, top 10% across the board. I think uniformly across the state, you'll see that most schools' testing scores have gone down. One thing with the more recent scores, I think that you can't really give them too much weight. My understanding when they evaluated that, since Greendale had, this last year had virtual learning and in-person learning. The virtual learners who did not come back to the schools to take the tests that were given in person. We automatically got a zero on those scores, which have brought the overall score down. Those students would have taken the test, everyone tested, our overall score and results would have been higher. So this last year, you can't, you got to take with a grain of salt and kind of wait and see. This current year, we're back to, you know, in-person learning. I hope that that will continue in the future. And I think that given time, the new curriculum and adjustment, our teachers are excellent in implementing that, that our test results are going to go back up. And you can't just look at the schools and look at test results by themselves. You also need to look at the character of our students, which is very high. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, we're on to question number six, and that's going to go to Tasha. And it is, as we move forward in the current pandemic and consider planning for a possible next pandemic. What are your views regarding health and safety protocols, including the use of masks and vaccines?
Okay, so my understanding for masking, it's masking and vaccines, is that correct? Correct. Okay, I think we can all agree that the best place for our students is in the classroom. They're better off emotionally, socially and academically. As we've noticed the test scores, I do think that it is very hard for children to keep up when they're sitting at home behind their computer, especially for the younger ones. As I've stated before, I just follow the advice of the experts. I'm not in the medical field. I am the type of person that would compile a bunch of information together in order to make a decision, as well as working with others. I would look at what the CDC is saying, what the American Academy of Pediatrics is saying, our local health department, the Department of Health Services. I would also work with the other school board members, along with the other administrators to say, hey, what is the best way that we can keep our kids in school safely? Along with the teachers, because the teachers need to be there as well. I would follow up, I guess, and look at our safety plan to see if any adjustments need to be made. As far as vaccines, the school, as a school board member, I am not authorized to mandate a vaccine. Vaccine mandates go through the state legislative process. And they are the ones to determine what is needed to enter school. Vericella, MMR, R2. There is a form out there that you can fill out in order to waive these mandated vaccines for school entrance. So again, as a school board member, I am not able legally or otherwise to mandate any vaccines. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob, question six.
Yeah, so I mean, it all comes back to the parents, right? Parents have the legal right to make all the medical decisions for their children. I think it is completely unacceptable for anyone on a school board or anyone in government to sit there and tell a child what they think is best for their children. Again, unacceptable. Children learn differently. Children have different health issues. And we need to respect the parent's choice. Every child should, or every parent should be able to decide what is best for them. So I am all for parents' choice. If a parent wants to send their kids in a mask, I completely support it. If a parent believes that they should send their kids to school without masks, again, I, I completely support it. In regards to vaccines, it's the exact same thing. No one should be telling parents what backs, or if they should get vaccinated for the, for COVID. They don't have that right. The goal though, is to, to listen to our health department. I appreciate any feedback that they have to offer. But when I hear, listen to the experts, follow the CDC. I pause when I hear that because they've been so wrong so many times. The message is always flip-flopped. So if you want to listen to the CDC, I'm all for it. You need to do what you need to do. But again, we need to take everything that these so-called experts say with a grain of salt.
Okay, Thor, you're next to tackle that question.
Thanks. As a current school board member, school board member, my actions are public record. So you can kind of see how I've navigated alongside of the work that's been going on with Greendale Schools and how I voted. Every step of the way to ensure that we're doing everything humanly possible to keep our kids safe. But also to ensure that they can be in school and have access to our phenomenal teachers in that in-person learning environment. One of the things that, you know, you think about what happened with the pandemic. That was day three of Kim being, or day two of Kim being announced as our full-time superintendent. I think back to that decision and in hindsight, there was no better person to lead our district. As someone who already knew, who was involved and grew up in the community, knew every single person in this community. Could you imagine if that would have been someone not Kim Mazik that was doing that? So one, I'm very blessed that the board was able to have her step into that role. And you're all agreed to appoint her and she's been doing a great job. She put together a safety plan, we had devices, everything out to students within a couple of days. Some of our counterpart districts took well over a month in some cases to kind of figure out how to move to that emergency remote learning. And then bringing kids back. We were the first ones to do a test to stay policy, so we could eliminate the hundreds of, of days that students were spending at home instead of in school. As close contacts, but didn't have any symptoms and weren't testing positive. And so I would just continue to, you know, lean, lean into, learn from and look at the experts and talk to the health department. And our school safety team as we navigate this process.
Okay, Tony, question six.
My answer is a little shorter, but for all students that are able. In-person learning for those students must happen. The psychological and antisocial damage to kids will be irreversible if virtual learning persists. From studies pointing to 300% increase in teen self-harm, anxiety and depression, schools being closed actually do more harm than good. So on the board, if I'm lucky enough to be part of it. We would focus on student achievement, engagement of youth, family and citizens with a sharp eye on finances. While working with the superintendent to hire top teaching talent to bring us out of this pandemic. Thank you.
Okay, Lauren, question six.
With regards to the decision whether to vaccinate or vaccinate or not vaccinate, that's certainly a personal decision that I definitely, that the government should have a direct say in. With regards to masking and safety issues, certainly schools should have a say in that. I believe the number one priority in our district right now needs to keep our schools open for in-person learning. We all know of the concern associated with kids not going to school and doing virtual learning and the lack of social connection. And so personal self-worth that are out there. And I strongly believe that at least in the short term, the best way to keep our schools open for personal learning is to follow the safety guidelines set forth by the CDC. And our health department, as well as the Association of American Pediatricians. John Hopkins, there's obviously a number of different professional groups out there. I think that's my belief that COVID rates are lower in our schools and in our community. Partially because our schools have effective safety plans in place with the community does not. And now is not the time to step back on and step back and not follow those guidelines, not require masking. There's all kinds of different issues associated with that in terms of what grade level should have mask, masking, what grade level shouldn't. But I go back, three weeks ago, they had the school concert at the third, fourth and fifth graders at the high school. All the parents showed up, all the kids were there in masks. It was a great time, you felt very safe. Earlier that week, a few days, we had a notice from the, it was the health department or the school that there was a close contact in my son's classroom. Following week, there was another notice of that. I'm concerned that if the kids weren't masking at that time, would that have been significant enough that contact? That maybe it would have led to some spread and maybe there wouldn't have been a school concert. Now is not the time to step back and on the safety concerns and safety protocols that are in place. Thank you.
Brian, you get the last response to question six.
As a healthcare worker, I believe the parents should make the choice, which I've always included for vaccines. We have the state law set by leaders in Madison with DPI and DHS of what's required. I always include the link for parents to fill out their form with their doctor. Make sure that it's submitted to the district and make sure that they have everything that they have available. As for masking, I feel and follow healthcare recommendations. And I think that's something that is essential. Making sure we keep, we in Greendale want our kids to be in person. We value the in-person, like, you know, teaching from our teachers that they're in person. And that they are directly interacting with our kids. So yes, I would follow those guidelines. I see masking with the kids in a community, there's more than just one, we need to protect all of them. And it is a part of dress, we make dress codes. We can make health codes in those same decisions as a school board. But I think following our health department is a big, big key asset. They're constantly there reviewing our community and making sure that, you know, what's going to be, they're trying to make our community as healthy as it can be. And I think they make a fair recommendation. And I think that's something that I would heavily lean on and look at. So in cases of making sure we're monitoring and making sure we're proactively setting a plan and then following that plan and guidance and just reassessing as needed.
Okay, thank you. Question seven, and Rob is going to take this one first. It is, what are your views on AP classes and options for academically advanced students? Should these remain as is, or should they be rolled into more general classes so more students can benefit?
Sorry, I was on mute there. So this kind of comes back to what Tasha touched on, whatever question that was, five, I believe, in regards to the AP classes. There's, there's quite a bit of confusion, I believe, still with, with the parents. But they absolutely should, should belong. And I think this comes back to an equity situation where if you have a gifted and talented child. That has high expectations for, for learning after they leave Greendale High School. Their growth should not be stunted so that other children can catch up to them. Again, that's, that's, that's unacceptable. These children are learning at a faster pace and we should provide them with opportunities so that they can learn, grow and succeed. While on the other hand, we should be working with the children that aren't learning at that level. So that we can get them up to that level. So AP classes are, they're a phenomenal resource for kids to have on their, on their, on their resume when they apply for colleges. It's accelerated learning. I took, I took some classes in high school that truly, truly prepared me for life after high school when I went to UW-Oshkosh. So yes, they should be, they should stay in school and they should be available for everyone that wants them. And just because kids take them and find out that it's too accelerated for them, that's completely fine too. And we, we need to let them know that it is okay to not, to not, not to succeed in those classes.
Okay, Thor, question seven.
Thanks. I've always been, and I've always said, if you've never tasted chocolate, you're not going to crave it. So I think that that's something that's so important when we think about even the course offerings for our students, right? We want to make sure that every student has the opportunity to try these different things and then dive deeper into those areas of study. And that's something that is so critical when we think about our high school courses and making sure that we continue to increase the relevance and rigor of our coursework. If you look at the track record across Greendale in the last three years that I've been on the board. We've actually increased the number of students that are taking college level coursework, whether that be AP or whether that be through other means. Through the University of Wisconsin system, through even other places like Arizona State that we were able to connect them through as part of virtual learning options and virtual learning plans. So that will continue, Project Lead the Way has been a program that's been implemented and, and has continued to grow. We've now seen the increase of different and additional STEM coursework. We've seen the increase in students partaking in the skilled trades and the current technical education programs across Greendale. And through our partnerships with MATC and with WCTC in those different areas. We launched the first ever Connect Academy, which then had students earning college credit and high school credit simultaneously for different areas and career pathways that they were interested in. So we continue, I think, need to have those opportunities. We also, through the honors courses that were, we rolled out over the last two years. We've seen a mass increase in number of students that are taking honors courses due to the way that those are being offered. So we look forward to looking at that data and continuing to offer additional opportunities for our students.
Okay, Tony, question seven.
While I can't give an in-depth answer like Thor, because I'm not a school board member. I do agree that there should be equal access. But I also, I also want to get back to a point that I made earlier that the AP classes are incredibly important, especially for the, what Rob said, the, the kids that have that are able to accelerate their learning a little bit faster than someone that might be falling behind a little bit. But also having the wide range of access to knowledge. Knowledge is power, but actually applying knowledge is power. And looking at the total, what's available out there from apprenticeship programs to working in the trades, to becoming a field service technician. In other words, there's more to life than computer coding. But that's something I'm really going to delve into. And I'm very, very hyper-focused on learning, should I attain this position? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lauren, you're next. I'm just going to repeat the question. What are your views on AP classes and options for academically advanced students? Should these remain as is, or should they be rolled into more general classes so more students can benefit?
I think the more options that we have available for our students, the better. Making those courses available to as many students as possible. Also exploring and expanding upon things we already do with connections with businesses. In the area, other schools, giving our students the opportunity to have class, college level classes while they're still in high school and getting into business, whether it's as internships and programs where they can learn, get some firsthand knowledge for after they graduate and help them make decisions in terms of what they want to do in the future. The more programs that we have available, certainly the better as far as that goes. I think one of the things I would certainly promote is on a middle school and high school level, as a parent, teacher, student organization, PTSO. Many schools in the state do that, that's kind of expansion on the PTO at the elementary level. But it's meant to really increase communication between the parents, teachers, the board, the district. Focus is a lot more on engaging and educating and empowering our community in an effort to improve the educational experience of all the students. A big plus to that is it's going to encourage communication, so people can hear what's going on. Avoid confusion that might occur when you're looking at stuff over the internet or on Facebook or wherever. It also is a good group that could involve new parents or new families that are, that are in the community. That aren't familiar with the way the schools work, aren't familiar with the programs, don't know anybody. The parent, teacher, student organization, bring the teachers together, bring other families together. Try to incorporate the new families in the communities so that they don't feel left out. I think in the end, that's going to, again, promote to equity in the district and well as improved test scores. Thank you.
Okay, Brian, you are next for question seven.
Thank you. As I started this campaign, I was a big advocate for our track. I spent a lot of time in my classwork in high school and honors track. And then I sat down with members of the administration, I sat down with teachers. And they gave me some information and articles and basically background on some of the decisions that have been made. And why they made them in the district as far as AP options and honors track work. Upon reading, there's a significant, significant data to show that when we incorporate these higher-end classes for everybody, the top students still achieve at the same level. But the bottom level significantly improves. And I think our goal here is to teach all the kids the best we can. So I think that track has, has created, let's try, let's make work, it's been done in other districts. So I think that's a good thing to focus on. As far as AP classes specifically, I think we need to make sure we have full equity and access. There is a cost to it and I would like to see that that cost is not something that we have that the child, the students have to bear if they want to make that choice. That that's something that they can just choose to make the AP class and not have to pay a fee for that credit.
Tasha, question seven.
Okay, I think there's a little bit of disconnect or understanding the definitions because the question stated something about the AP classes and then there's the honors classes. The AP classes are staying as they are. It was the honors level classes that they embedded into core classes. So before, they might have a chemistry class and an honors chem. Now the honors chemistry is embedded within the general core chemistry classes. And I wasn't on board with this at the beginning, but similar to Brian, I've done a ton of research. I've spoken with Kim, I've spoken with students. And it's, it appears that more students are taking these classes. They're achieving the higher level material, the honors designation. They're enjoying it and their, their, their confidence is going up because now they're saying, oh, oh my gosh, I can do it. Whereas before, maybe they thought, oh, that's just for those smarter kids over there. But no, really, everybody can learn. It's just you have to learn at your own pace. I support all the AP classes in the district. They also have these cap classes, so my son was able to take an environmental science cap class as a sophomore and earn college credit at UW-Oshkosh. They have a lot of options for the higher level performing kids. And they also have a lot of options for the kids that maybe want to go into a two-year programs at M A T C, W C T C. This year alone, they had 40 students sign up to take classes at those two campuses. I do feel that Greendale is really trying to bridge the gap among all types of learning levels and include and have everyone have equal access.
Okay, thank you. We'll have time for one more question. So this will be the last question, question number eight. And Thor, you will start with this question. It is, if elected, how will you represent the voices of the Greendale teachers?
Great question. So one thing that I've spent a lot of time doing over the last three years and even before that is just really staying engaged and connected to our community, being engaged in our schools, talking with our, our teachers on a regular basis. I think if you talk to any teacher in Greendale, they'll tell you that I have, always have an open door policy. When you talk to any of the principals, any of the district administrators, the same thing is true. They know that at any point in time, they can pick up the phone, they can contact me if they have questions or concerns that they want to discuss or talk through. And as, you know, my goal of being focused on always doing what's best for the students, it doesn't necessarily mean that I can always do everything that the teachers want, want or that they say. But at the same time, I always listen to what they have to say, what they're trying to do, why they're trying to do that and try to figure out how we can empower them to be as successful as humanly possible because they are extremely talented. We are fortunate to have the phenomenal teaching staff and administration across our district. So in general, I will continue to do what I'm doing. I will make sure that they always have that, I have an open ear and open door policy that I can, they can reach out to me. I will proactively go into each of the schools as I have each and every year that I've been on the board to make sure that I'm accessible and in person. So those are just a couple of examples of the things that I'll do to make sure that that teacher voice isn't lost as it goes through the different areas and up to the board.
Okay, Tony, that last question.
Um, because I'm not a school board member yet, again, I hate to default back to that and I apologize for doing it again. But this, so I, all I can do is give you my view outside looking in at the point, at this point. Um, I represent the kids, the parents, and the residents of the great village of Greendale. I will, of course, listen to the teachers, including those who choose not to be in the Greendale Education Association. As teacher voice is definitely part of the equation in returning the district back to excellence. So aside from that, I'm at a knowledge deficit on, on teacher input. But I do believe that they're 33% of the equation. But I do believe that we answer to the kids first, the parents second, and then the teachers have the final say or the, a large part of the input. But I believe the pecking order, if we have to have one, would be the kids and the residents first and then listen to the teachers.
Okay. Lauren, question eight, which is, if elected, how will you represent the voices of the Greendale teachers?
I believe the teachers are one of the pillars of the school community. I certainly have, I'm an open door policy with regards to talking to any of them with regards to their viewpoints. I need, I believe that they need to be taken into consideration. They're on the front lines, they're with our students, they're in the schools, they're dealing with the pandemic. They probably should be getting hazard pay. They spent all that extra time learning how to teach virtually on the run. They're outstanding. I think our teachers are second to none. At the beginning of this last school year, as part of the PTO, I had pretty regular contact with the teachers in the school, more so when they were in person and since the virtual schooling and when the pandemic hit. But this last, last year in the summer, meeting some of the PTO board members, we got together, we contacted a few of the teachers. We sat down socially before the school year started, had an open discussion. What, what are your expectations for the upcoming school year? What kind of support do you need? What can we do to help you? What, what can we do to make sure that you're successful in the classroom with the, with the students? So having an open door policy and communicating with them is important. I believe that the Greendale schools set the standard for excellence. And when the pillars of the school are obviously our children and our families, which include the parents, our outstanding teachers and staff, leaders in the school. You know, we've got a principal out there in middle school, I hope we're going to meet next week, who's willing to camp out on the road for the middle school in support of, in support of the cause. Administration that possesses, possesses vision and really involved community that is not made up of parents or students, but it's the businesses, the rec department, police station, police, the fire department that are all involved in the community and care about our schools also.
Okay, Brian. Question eight.
Thank you. Beginning, everybody in Greendale School District has a vested interest in these kids. You know, the parents want their kids to succeed, the kids want to succeed, and the teachers want the kids to succeed. So I think as a school board member, it's my job to listen to what the teachers are saying. They are the people that see how the curriculum's working inside a classroom. They are the ones that see how safety protocols are working. They go to Kim, they can come to us. I think that open door answer is essential. And we hear what they have to say. You know, sometimes they are the person that is doing the work that we've passed on for them to do, our kids. And I think that, you know, making sure that we hear their input and what they need is essential because our school district doesn't succeed without them. And they're a great part of our community. You know, we have a very high rate of teachers that live in Greendale as well as teaching Greendale. And in the couple of school districts I've had experience with, this is higher, significantly higher than any I've ever been in. And I think that says a lot about our community. And I just continue to listen to the parents and continue the great relationship with the teachers.
Okay. Rob.
Actually, I think, I think Tasha is next.
Tasha, thank you. I grew up with teachers. My mom was a third grade teacher, my dad was a biology teacher. They both were in the system for over 30 years. So I feel on a personal level, I really understand what teachers go through day in, day out. I understand how hard they work, how they come home at night and do their grading and, and recording, whatever they need to do for hours on end. I, I am in full support of the teachers. They are the ones that are with our students every day, all day long. Our students need to be able to, you know, go to them if they have questions or concerns. There needs to be a relationship and I, there needs to be a relationship between the teachers as well as the board members as well, as well. So I have an open door policy. I've always had that in the workplace. I would have it with the teachers in the district. I listen, I research. They can email me, they can call. I, I want the teachers to know that I have their backs because I really think they are the cornerstone of our, our children's success in the school district. Thanks.
You have the last answer for question eight.
All right, thank you. So common sense tells you that you don't have good schools without good teachers, right? My, my daughter, she's going to be going into K-5 next year, my nephew in first grade, and then my other nephew being in K-4. And with my, with the majority of my family just starting their educational journey in, in Greendale School District, I want the absolute best teachers teaching my family members and teaching my friends' kids. The best way to do this too, to work with the teachers is to listen to their concerns and be transparent. I actually consider myself to be fortunate. Last week, Zach Iger reached out to me and him and I had a two and a half hour phone conversation. We kind of laughed because we both thought it would last about 10 minutes. But I gained a lot of valuable insight, not only about him, but the school district. And I think it's also important to let teachers know that it's a two-way street. I want to reach out to you. I want to learn more about what's important to you. But you can also reach out to us, not only as candidates, but if we're fortunate enough to get on the school board. Because I want to listen, I want to hear what's important to you and I want you to succeed as well. And having great teachers in Greendale, again, is just, it, it's ridiculous to say it, but it's the number one important thing to make sure that these kids have a good education.
Okay, we have, we will have now 60 seconds for each candidate's closing remarks. I believe that starts with Thor as giving the first closing remarks.
I think it's, right? Thor started the last one.
Correct, I started the last one. I can go if you want me to.
Tony, he's got with closing.
Okay. Um, I've spoken to many, many concerned parents in the district and they've told me that their chief concern is the uptick in dealing with social issues and it has overshadowed the decline in academic achievement. Greendale has fallen over the past 10 years in math and ELA, but precipitously over the last five years, not just over the pandemic. And while the school district has done a very good job overall in dealing with the COVID pandemic, I'm hearing at least from a few people that they do not wish to move forward to normalcy at any time soon. Regardless that their surrounding districts have already done so. So a vote for me is a vote for tackling academic decline and tempering further restrictive COVID restrictions that are far beyond what is warranted at this stage of the pandemic. Thank you.
Okay, Lauren, your closing statement.
Yeah. If you, once someone who really cares about our schools has a track record of being involved with the school community through the PTO and other groups, is trained to handle conflict, and I say conflict, I mean high conflict. We're collaboratively with the community and district to preserve the high quality of education in Greendale. I work to strategize to keep our schools open, support programs that prevent bullying, racism, violence, and drugs, promote awareness of mental health issues and equity issues in our schools. Now I use my legal training to critically analyze all evidence, to carefully listen to all viewpoints and make sound decisions that are in the best interest of our school community. It's important to listen to all viewpoints and analyze all the evidence to make sound decisions. Do your research, ask the questions that need to be answered. Asked, I believe I possess vision, integrity, and commitment. I'm committed to the success of our schools. I believe that Greendale schools set the standard for education, that we are stronger together, and I would ask for your vote. Thank you.
Brian, your closing statement.
Thank you for all your time and effort this, today hosting this K-2. My closing ideas, I spend my entire life out of service to my community. I make sure that I'm listening to patients the same way I would listen to members of the community. Look at what do we need to make sure that our children have the best outcome? Making sure that they have all the tools they need. When it comes to decision-making, listening to the community, listening to our teachers and administration, and I'm listening to experts. My job would be to make sure that all the policies of the school board and our school district give every student equal opportunity and equal access and equity so that they can get the best education that we can provide. For me, on 15th, we'll help that.
Thank you. Tasha, now it is your turn, closing statement.
Okay, so we have heard from several candidates today. And I think what sets me apart from the rest of them is that I take a multi-dimensional approach to the, to solving problems. And the best example is that of academic achievement. There are several, several facets to this. To prove our proficiency in math and reading, we need to make sure that students are socially, emotionally, and physically safe so that they're ready to learn. We need to address the substitute teacher shortage. We also need to be able to put our administrators back into the jobs that they were hired to do, not subbing in the classrooms. We need to implement the curriculum changes needed to address these academic shortfalls and those changes are all in motion. Every issue the district has requires a multifaceted approach, not a one-stop-fits-all approach. In conclusion, I adore this community and what is best for our students. I will fiercely advocate for the students and the teachers alike in order to achieve education excellence in our district. And I hope that you vote for me on February 15th. Thank you.
Rob, your closing statement.
Yeah, so meeting my wife and coming to this community and, and getting invested in it with teaching Twi-Nite and volunteering at Village Days. I've, I've met a lot of friends in this community. My, my children have made a lot of friends in this community. Truly means a lot to me. It's a very unique place to live and I think a lot of people don't realize how special Greendale is in the Greendale School District. And I just want to do my part in keeping the traditions of Greendale alive. I never have anything bad to say about this community. It's, it's truly a special place, special, special place to live. And I also just want to take the opportunity to say that running a campaign is not easy. So I want to wish everyone well as we inch closer to February 15th. Best of luck to you. And I also want to thank my wife and I want to thank my kids. They've made numerous sacrifices for me to do this. And I also want to thank the, the people that have helped my campaign and have reached out and talked to me. I've made new friends and I've met a lot of great people. So if I don't win, there's a lot of positives to take away from this. And I hope when I see new people out in the village and around town, stop and say hi. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the Greendale School Board Candidate Forum on behalf of the
One more.
Did I miss somebody? I'm so sorry, Thor.
Thanks.
So sorry. Okay, last, Thor.
Thank you. Family is everything to me. It has been growing up. My entire family gets together every Sunday and celebrates the work that's going on across all of our different journeys in life. And as the only school board member with children in the district, I've been honored to bring my perspective and expertise to continuously improving Greendale schools for the last three years. to bring my perspective and expertise to continuously improving Greendale schools for the last three years. And I hope to earn your vote on February 15th. I've been steadfast and will remain focused on the ABCs, access and opportunities to students, better support and systems for our staffing and conscious, cost-conscious decisions for residents. Ultimately, I will always do what I think is best for our students. And I look forward to living into our strategic plan that I was fortunate enough to co-create with our board and the community members that are going to drive that academic excellence that we all want and see for each and every student across our district to continue to ensure that Greendale Schools is a beacon for our community.
Okay. And you ended right on time, so thank you. I apologize for almost missing you. So now that does conclude the Greendale School Board Candidate Forum. On behalf of the Love Thy Neighbor Foundation and the League of Women Voters Milwaukee County, thank you to the community for your questions. They were very good thorough questions. I think we covered a lot about the Greendale School District. And thank you to our candidates for participating in the forum and running for positions for the Greendale School Board. Thanks to each of you. Brian Bach, Tasha Hughes, Rob Koblaska, Thor Amisco, Tony Novinska, and Lauren Shuckhart. Now I'm going to need help with this one. This forum will be posted for viewing. Can somebody tell me where it's going to be posted for viewing? Julie, do you know where?
Yeah, yeah, Eileen, tell me if I'm wrong, but it should be posted first to Love Thy Neighbor Foundation YouTube channel, and we will link to it from vote411.org.
Correct. Okay, thank you. As a reminder, the primary election will be held February 15th. Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and with proper documentation, you may still register when you go to vote. You may cast an in-person absentee ballot at the Village Hall until February 11th from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday. The last day to request an absentee ballot by mail is February 10th. Voters will be required to show a photo ID in order to vote. Information on voting and elections can be found at vote411.org at the League of Women Voters of Milwaukee County website and at the League of Women Voters Milwaukee County website. So the information is that these two sites, vote411.org and also at the League of Women Voters Milwaukee County website. Please visit the vote411.org website to view your sample ballot, information on your candidates, and a detailed question and answer section. The Q and A section will allow you to directly compare your candidates. We want your vote to count, so please let us know if you have questions. The League of Women Voters reminds you that our democracy depends on citizen involvement. I trust that you all intend to vote on February 15th primary. It's very important. And we hope that you will help increase voter turnout and encourage your friends and family to vote as well. So thank you very much, and thanks to all the candidates for doing a wonderful job.